It being the appointed time, we call the meeting to order. Colerole.
Bolt.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harris. Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Sehorn.
Here.
Salter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the invocation. Let us pray. Almighty God, we are truly thankful for all that you've given us. We thank you for this city commission and we pray that you would keep them in your mind, help them do your will. Hopefully that everything will go well in our city and will continue to prosper and we pray that you will continue to bless us with your abundance and your protection. Lead, guide, and direct us in everything we do and we give you the praise and the glory. Amen. Please join me in the flag salute. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and be seated. You'll see that the order of the agenda has changed a little bit in that citizens' participation is first and apparently some time ago we passed an ordinance that said that citizens' participation will occur before any of the regular business of the meeting, so we moved it to number one in front of the consent agenda. So this is that time during the meeting where if you would like to talk to us, you can approach the mic, tell us who you are, sign in, and you have three minutes to say what you think. We have a 12-minute limit per subject matter, three minutes per individual. So if there's someone here that would like to speak to the commission, come up, tell us who you are. Right there, boss.
Hi, I know most of you all. My name's Barbara Smith and look at all these glorious kids we have here on our behalf. We're all cyclists and we all want the same thing when we ride our bikes. We want safe places to ride our bikes. Whatever the reason is for riding, do you all ride your bikes a lot?
Yes.
And you all look so healthy and maybe they'll come back after they get out of school and stay in Shawnee if we can build our infrastructure up. That's all I have to say. So we want safe places, right guys?
Yes.
That's good.
Thank you.
My name is Booker. I like to ride bikes, bicycles, but I wish I could ride it, ride home safely to church and school safely. I have, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good job.
You did a good job.
My name is Brandon Bell. I'm here to advocate for the Safe Routes to Schools Master Plan. We were, we had the privilege of getting the Safe Routes to Parks grant earlier this year, which is a grant to help advocate for safety to get to and from the parks in our community. And we're lucky today to have Danielle Sherman here from the actual Safe Routes to Parks group here from North Carolina, so I'm gonna let her say a few words.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. So I'm coming all the way from Wake Forest, North Carolina. It's been a pleasure to be in Oklahoma, it's my first time, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of Safe Routes to School Plan and tell you a little bit more about Safe Routes to Parks very quickly. So Safe Routes to Parks, we really focus on improving safe and equitable access to parks, convenient access, one that also ends at a well-maintained and programmed park, one that's within 10 minutes from where someone lives. And so we find that this is a real important need for communities of color, which for, you know, the city of Shawnee is about 25 percent, those that live in poverty, which is about 23 percent, for children and older adults, which for the county is about 40 percent, and then those that really just rely on walking, biking, and taking public transportation. And so from what I've seen thus far, Shawnee is really set up really for working on Safe Routes to Parks. There's a lot of initiatives that are going on, like the Blue Zones effort around well-being district, also various plans that are already developed or in development, like the comprehensive plan, the complete streets policy, the sidewalk master plan, and of course, Safe Routes to School Plan. All those are in alignment with the Safe Routes to Parks effort as well, and we support those Safe Routes to School efforts. And then lastly, just the collaboration that I've seen go on, there's so many nonprofits, foundations, and just knowing the work that the city has already done to support efforts for people, for folks to get from their home to various destinations safely, so definitely in support of Safe Routes to School Plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Welcome to Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Todd and I moved to Shawnee a couple of years ago from Lawton. I started cycling when I was riding, when I was driving my car and realized I was seeing a lot of people on bicycles down there where they have safe paths and safe routes. As a physician assistant, it's hard for me to counsel patients to exercise when I didn't have a plan myself. And seeing obese people, seeing people out there of all kinds of shapes and sizes and ages encouraged me to start riding. And so I want to thank you guys for considering funding to expand cycling in Shawnee. You'll see more healthy residents out there trying the same thing. If you build it, you know, we'll come. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Mary Ellen Martin and I'm here to ask the commission to reinstate the robo-calls when there's a tornado warning in Shawnee. At four o'clock the other morning last Thursday, I did not hear the sirens, my phone did not go off. And always before, I could go to bed in peace, realizing that the phone was gonna ring if there was a tornado warning or one on the ground in Shawnee. I was told it was a budget cost that couldn't be, you all couldn't handle, and that it was $12,000. And I said, "A call?" And he said, "No." I was speaking to the city manager. "No, it's for the contract." Well, I think $12,000, if that's a year or even a season of tornadoes, is a small amount to pay for people to be warned in time to get up and go to the shelter. I had no idea that the tornado warning system was for people who were outside. And, you know, you can't rely on your cellphone, number one, and not everyone in this town has a smartphone. And I'm sure that they would appreciate it, as I would, to be able to go to bed, lie down, go to sleep, knowing that I would be safe if there was a tornado on the ground or a tornado warning in Shawnee. I would really encourage you all to consider this expenditure. It seems very small to me for the benefit that it would bring to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Joyce and I'm the director at the Shawnee Senior Center. And I just wanted to let you know that I am at your disposal and beck and call if you have any questions on the contract review packet that was sent to each of you in a revised manner. We have cut to the bone everything that we could. We've rearranged schedules, we have drawn on additional grant funding, and in the back of most packets, I believe, you'll see that we received a check from the Sarkis Foundation for $20,000 for revitalizing the kitchen in the back at the senior center. So I look forward to visiting with you. I have not been asked any questions. I would love to be asked some questions. So my phone number and everything, my email address is in the packet. Please call me if you have any inquiries about the Shawnee Senior Center packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Thanks. Anyone else? Going?
Hi, my name's Steve Palmer. I just want to speak on behalf of the senior center. I really feel like the job they're doing and the people that are in place staff-wise at the senior center are critically important in the sense of the place they hold in the community. I know that this is under consideration for some changes in, at the senior center. Budget-wise and all of that, I'm not sure of the details there. I just know that Kate and her staff hold a place in our community that I really feel very strongly that if you all were to change that and alter that in the sense of the staff there in regard to her leadership and her staff, I just really feel like there needs to be some serious discussion. And I know she just reached out to you all for a meeting with her. I feel like that would be a very beneficial, a very smart move on your all's part to at least have a face-to-face meeting with her and in regard to the changes and the moves that you're gonna make in regard to the senior center. I feel like for the good of our community and the way our city government is viewed, I think that would be a very, very strategic move on your all's part to do that. I know that you all are looking to obviously take care of the city, run the city in a smart way, in a wise way. No problem there, but I do feel like for sure that if you all are going to make these moves, it would be very beneficial for our city to do it in concert with her and her staff and going through the details so that there's no unanswered questions, so that we can all be on the same page as to why things are being done and what is going on in regard to the decisions that you're making. So I applaud your efforts to do things correctly and in order and take care of the city in a responsible way, but I would really encourage you to take those steps to do that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Steve.
Hello, I'm Alezia. I work at Gateway and I'm nervous, but y'all gave me courage, so thank you for coming first. So I would like to just say how we at Gateway have collaborated with the senior center for the past year, maybe a little more. We do what's called a Wellness and Recovery Lunch, and so what that is, on the last Tuesday of every month, we invite people that are in recovery at our agency, people that have graduated, and the community to join together for a meal. And that has many functions, largely to start integrating people in recovery back into the community and become productive citizens again, and for the community to see them in a positive light. Why Kate and her staff have been so effective for us? We used to have to do that lunch on our own, which that's like planning the lunch, picking it up, paying for it. Their schedules are often, the people that I work with are often inconsistent all over the place. They've got a lot of different things that they're trying to juggle, so that put us in a financial hole when we were trying to do those lunches, and it was just one more thing to try to coordinate. When we, when I work with the staff, I can call Valerie, I can say, "Hey, we have 25 people that are coming tomorrow." They have it set up for us, they do the lunch for us, we pay a minimal fee. It is incredibly easy for us to collaborate with the senior center, and that makes it possible for our people to really engage in the community because Kate and her staff do it in a way that works for us. And so that flexibility is really important. So of course, I hope that Kate and her staff stay. If, or at least anybody coming on takes notice and direction from how, for how flexible and collaborative they are, because Kate and her staff really help people that can't fit inside the box and that often fall through the cracks, and she and her staff have seen to it that they also get served in a very practical way for them, so I hope you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alezia. Anyone else?
Hi, guys. I've never talked before.
Tell us, tell us who you are.
I'm sorry. I'm Brittany, and you can tell I'm also a little nerve-wracked, but anyways, I'm here today to talk on behalf of the Shawnee Senior Center. My grandparents, Louis and Carol Poole, they attend the senior center, and they go there quite often, and I have peace of mind that they're getting taken care of to the best of their abilities. They, my grandmother had a heart attack not that long ago, and I just, I worry about her, and I have peace of mind knowing that when she's at the Shawnee Senior Center, that she's well taken care of with Kate and her staff. Not only my grandparents, but also all the other seniors that go up there. I see them every day and I meet with them, and it's just a wonderful conversation point. Not only that, but they are such strong pillars of the community, as you've already heard. I just, I really think that any change will be a negative impact to the community, and I hope that you consider the package that they have given you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
I'm Corina Wilson Pickens. I've been a newspaper reporter for 43 years down in southern Oklahoma and still pretended that I was down there after I came up here and sent my writing down there, and then some of it would slip into the Shawnee paper. I had my own TV talk show for seven years where I interviewed, started interviewing people. The first one was 100 years old. And then they came and wanted me to do a few more things. They wanted me to run for state representative and this and that and all this, but my husband was paralyzed for 38 years, and then I met a guy from Shawnee and I married him and came up here after I had cancer twice. So that's, he passed away, and so I stayed. I seemed to like some of the people, especially, someone said, "Well, go to the senior citizen center." But I said, "I didn't have anything to do and didn't know anybody, and you know, you don't wanna just go out and start meeting people in the community you don't know." So I felt safe coming to the senior center. It has been my life. And Kate came one morning real early. I called her and I said, "Kate, for some reason I keep having this weird chest pain and it won't go away, and it's getting stronger." She said, "Corin, I'll be right there." Well, guess what? They told me I had a heart and was having some heart problems. So thanks to Kate for being there for me. I appreciate all of y'all and all that you do, but know that Kate is there for, I don't care if they come in and their clothes are raggedy, I don't care if they come in with a suit, Kate's gonna greet you with a smile, make you feel welcome, and if someone's hungry, she's gonna see they're fed. I want y'all to know, you don't realize what you have working with the people in Shawnee through Kate. And I'm here for, and you know what? All y'all will need to be voted on sometime, so you better remember and stand up for Kate.
Hello, I'm Lyndell Byrd. I'm the president of Shawnee Square Eight Square Dance Club. We square dance at the senior center. I'd like to thank Kate for bending over backwards for us for years. I really would. She's, I look at you guys, I'm very proud to have you guys. I'm so excited to have you guys as our commission because you guys are eminently qualified and you're from the locals. And I feel the same way about Kate. But one of our issues I know that you guys deal with is worrying about our community. And one thing I would like you all to think about is that the number-one indicator of deviance in our society is lack of attachment to societal institutions. And how does this lack of attachment happen? Well, our societal institutions are funded by local disposable income, the local people's disposable income. What's the number-one indicator of disposable income? Of course, the median wage. And as the buying power of the median wage goes, so does our societal institutions. And as our, as our disposable income goes broke, so does our societal institutions. And we have a breakdown in the transfer of values. And so that's one of the things to think about, is really look at the buying power of the median wage and what you can do. And I thank you, and I thank Kate.
Mr. Mayor, that achieves 12 minutes on the senior center. Thank you. Anyone else on anything other than the senior citizen center? Okay. Thank you very much. Would any of the commissioners like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gillum, sanctified by Commissioner Bolt. Call question. Motion carries six zero. Item three, consideration of approval of interim city manager's hiring of Rodney Foster as Shawnee Fire Chief.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, great evening in Shawnee. We have a number of guests here. I'd like to bring forward, they're all named Foster. Not talking about you, Ryan. Come on, girls, get up here. Mayor, commissioners, I want to introduce the Rodney Foster family. And I'm gonna let Rodney make some remarks and make personal introductions, but Chance and I had the opportunity to search the nation really for a suitable replacement for our fire chief, and I submit that we found the perfect candidate. Our proposed nominee, Mr. Foster here, comes to us from Midwest City, and he's been the training battalion chief in Midwest City for some time. He's a widely recognized expert in fire safety and training, and he provides a capability that blends precisely with our requirements for the community. I ask for your support tonight. I'd like to introduce Rodney, and he can introduce his family.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, thank you so much for this time. This is my wife, Meredith, and my oldest daughter, Carly, my youngest daughter, Berkeley, my mom, Jonita, and my dad, Bill. I believe I've had a wonderful support system in the last 20 years, and, you know, I think I've done everything I can do to become a good fire chief. I'm really excited about the community. I own land here and I plan on being here in this community very soon. I can't say enough about the process that we went through. There were some outstanding candidates, I believe, and, you know, it was, it was a wonderful experience for me to be able to be selected. I have had conversation with, I'm not sure if I met all of the firefighters, but I know I've met at least 95 percent of them. I've been to the fire stations, meeting with them to, you know, explain, you know, just who I am and where I'm from and what we can do going forward, and I'm really excited about the opportunity, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rodney. We're excited to have you. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Foster as Shawnee Fire Chief? Commissioner Sehorn, seconded by Commissioner Rutherford.
I didn't get the featured speaker, Booker Dahman, signed in, and so I didn't decide me in, I couldn't.
We'd hunt you down if you didn't do it. Call a question, please. Motion carries six I. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Do we have a pet this week?
I saw one earlier.
I saw one earlier, I thought.
We let it go.
Somebody adopted a pet. We're so, we're so good at this.
It was a little nervous.
I'm a little nervous. Can I, may I go?
I'll adopt him.
Item five, presentation of possible action to adopt Shawnee Safe Routes to Schools Master Plan.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, another great opportunity tonight to extol the virtues of our community and the efforts that have amounted to an 18th month contribution to design a program that I'm gonna let Rachel Milo describe in detail. But this Safe Routes to School proposal that you have for you defines our community in a number of ways, and I don't want to steal Rachel's thunder because clearly she's the driving force behind it, but it is a central part of our Blue Zones initiative, which also defines us as a community of uplifting innovation. Rachel, would you please, Norman?
Hello, commissioners, hello, mayor. In Safe Routes to School was established in 2005, you may know this, to combat not only air quality and congestion around schools, but it was also to address obesity, diabetes, and cardiovascular disease in students. Over the first 10 years of Safe Routes to Schools, a little over a billion dollars was contributed to competing communities to earn that money to implement Safe Routes. Shawnee historically has not been awarded any significant amount of Safe Routes to School dollars, and we believe that part of that is because we've never actually had a comprehensive plan around Safe Routes to Schools. So in 2017, the commission passed a resolution of support for Safe Routes to School and to state that children really were of our highest priority. So per the city manager's description, a work group was formed, and in your packet on page five, you can see who the work group was. And this work group spent about 18 months putting together the efforts of a Safe Routes to School with all six E components that are required from Safe Routes to Schools to receive the grant money. And you can see those on page 18, and I'm gonna highlight just what those six Es are so you understand that Safe Routes to School is not a ask for money, it's actually a plan to put in place so that we can apply for grants. But to apply for the grant, we must meet the criteria of all six Es to be eligible to compete. And that includes education, and so what's been done so far? Walking school buses have been implemented at six of our nine schools that are in this plan. Bike education has happened through bike rodeos and a memory game distributed to the schools and students. The second E is encouragement. That's part of what we do with the kids and biking is to encourage not only you as commissioners to find it important, but also encourage people to actually use the paths. And at Grove, they've partnered with a church at their halfway point as a parking lot for some fun. Enforcement. Enforcement is not only the enforcement from law enforcement, which we know our law enforcement enforces the speeds around our school zones, which is also part of the Safe Routes to Schools overall comprehensive plan, which says, will we enforce speeding in these zones where we have a lot of children walking? We also have utilized the city police department to help us with walking in areas that weren't as safe around both Grove and Pleasant Grove. And then evaluation. The part of this plan is that The part of this plan is that evaluation—this is a living, breathing plan that should be evaluated on a regular cadence, whether that's annually with the student surveys and the parent-teacher surveys, or whether it's every couple of years to reassess it. But there's an evaluation component in this plan as well. And then, lastly, is equity. What we know is that all children and adults of all economic and social backgrounds, as well as people of all physical and mental abilities, deserve the right to walk and bike safely in their neighborhood and in their community to school. With poverty being a significant issue in our community, it is more relevant than ever to consider these safe routes so that it's equitable for all. So, this project that's put before you, there's examples of what's been done around each of the schools. And if you flipped to page 31 and 32, I thought I'd walk you just through one sweet example, which is around Shawnee Middle School, for example. So, as we develop around Shawnee Middle School, this work group met with teachers, parents, students, and the administrators to say, where are your safety hazards around your school and what could be done from an infrastructure standpoint, from a signee's standpoint, and education standpoint, and then prioritize those. So, this plan did that for nine of our schools in the community. Three of our elementary schools have been surveyed two consecutive years, and then another three were picked up this year, and then again in the fall, we'll pick up another three. Again, most of this is done by our work groups. If you hire an outside consultant group—which one of our other Blue Zones communities did this—these consultants can cost anywhere between $25,000 to $75,000 to come in and do this assessment and to write a plan for you, but the payoff can be substantial. Another Blue Zones community just this year was awarded $2.2 million in grant funding for their Safe Routes to School. And so, we modeled Shawnee's plan after their plan that was accepted by—for federal funding. We ask you to adopt this living, breathing plan as a commitment to our children and safe routes. This plan does not put timing on anything. It puts priorities. And then, in the columns where you see there are cost estimates, our city engineering department has helped me with those cost estimates for twofold. One, it positions us to understand and be able to speak to the funding that would be required to put some of these in place. But it also gives a funding amount so that when grants are awarded, we can very quickly and easily identify projects that fit within those funding capabilities. The assistant city manager can also let you know that we are applying for grants on your behalf on a regular basis. There was another one that came in, actually, Friday, that we are applying for—for funding around the education component of this particular plan. But we're not actually able to even apply for those grants without a plan like this. So, we ask that the city please adopt this Safe Routes to School Master Plan.
Any questions of Rachel while she's at the podium? Thank you very much.
None, thank you.
Would entertain a motion to adopt Shawnee Safe Routes to Schools Master Plan? Second move by Commissioner Gillum, seconded by Commissioner Bolt. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much. Item six, consideration possible action to cancel July 1st, 2019 city commission meeting.
Mayor, Commissioners, in simple terms, the state language is far more complex than my cowboy English can account of it. And to also to establish precedent in keeping with previous precedent, the council has to take affirmative action to change the dates of scheduled commission meetings. July 1st is a Monday, which would be a normally scheduled commission meeting, but it obviously lies very close to the 4th of July weekend and the holidays that ensue. We recommend that you cancel that meeting.
Chair moves we cancel the July 1st meeting. Is there a second? Moved by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Vote, Ron.
Ron. Yes.
Motion carries six-zero. How about—the—how about the July 15th meeting? Item seven, public hearing and consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at the northeast corner of North Union Avenue and East 45th Street from A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial for purpose—purpose of commercial development, case P0219, applicant Stephen Landys. Rebecca?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is on the northeast corner of Union and 45th. It's approximately 4.29 acres. It's currently A1 agriculture, and they're asking to go to C3 Highway Commercial. That is in line with our currently adopted 2005 comprehensive plan, and staff does recommend approval of this item. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Any questions to Rebecca? Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Sehorn, seconded by Commissioner Gillum.
I'm glad you got the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Declare the public hearing open. My apologies. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? The public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Now, does your motion stand? Is there a second? By Commissioner Gillum. Is there any further discussion? Call a question.
I'll read the ordinance title under the record, Mr. Mayor, before the vote. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit. Attractive land described as beginning at the southwest corner of the west half of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 31, Township 11, north range four east of the Indian Meridian, thence east 412.5 feet, thence north 526.8 feet, thence west 412.5 feet, thence south 526.8 feet, to the point of beginning from zoning classification A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Now, may I call a question? Motion carries six-zero. Thank you. Number eight, public hearing and consideration of the ordinance to rezone property located east of North Union Avenue, north of East 45th Street, and west of North Harrison Avenue from A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial for purpose—purpose—purposed purpose of a commercial development case, P0519, applicant Stephen Landys.
This tract is directly east of the corner tract that you guys just approved for rezone on, and it's the same thing. It's A1. They're asking to go to C3, and staff and planning commission did recommend approval of this item.
Thank you. Any questions of Rebecca? Declare the public hearing opens. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Call a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just slowing down. I apologize. I don't want to do it either. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit. Attractive land in the west half of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 31, Township 11, north range four east of the Indian Meridian, as described, beginning 412.5 feet east of the southwest corner of said west half of southwest quarter of southeast quarter, thence east 247.5 feet, thence north 526.8 feet, thence west 247.5 feet, thence south 526.8 feet, to the point of beginning containing three acres, more or less, from zoning classification A1 Rural Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Now, call a question. Motion carries six-zero. Item nine, public hearing and consideration of the ordinance to rezone property located east of North Union Avenue, north of East 45th Street, and west of the AT—Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railroad from C3 Highway Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential for the purpose—to purpose of a single-family development case, P0719, applicant Stephen Landys.
And staff would just make a note that the total acreage is 25.76 acres, so this would keep the frontage 1.91 acres, Zone C3, which is its current zoning, and then would just rezone the portion behind that, which is the 23.85 acres. Planning commission and staff do recommend approval of this item.
Any questions of Rebecca?
Public hearing.
Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Public hearing is closed.
You're up, Joe.
Is there a motion to approve?
Not yet.
Is there a motion to approve?
No. Do you go first?
No. I'll get the motion.
I got it.
I'll get this figured out.
There you go. You're doing good.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Now, read it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit. Attractive land located in the southeast quarter of Section 31, Township 11, north range four east of the Indian Meridian, Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, more particularly described within the complete ordinance, all in Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification C3 Highway Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries six-zero. Item 10, new business.
How many new business, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners' comments.
Well, it was good to see lots of folks here tonight. I always enjoy that. Especially love seeing the kids. I'm not sure whether Travis brought them or who did, but I was really, really glad that they came. I think it's great for them to get involved, and I think it's a lot more likely that they'll stay involved to get them started like that. So, it was just good to see everybody, and appreciate everybody coming out. You know, when I came on the commission this time, it was a little bit different than '92 to 2000, actually. It was like the Wild West then. It was a rough ride. I thought this was gonna be about the same thing, and I'm learning that isn't quite true. We've got a lot going on. The city is moving. We've got so much that—the half-cent is not started yet, but it's going to very soon. We're looking at some really fine things ahead. The future looks really, really good. And I appreciate being here this time, and it turned out to be a lot more fun than I thought it was gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a lot going on in Shawnee at the moment, all of which is good. Shawnee Forward's 2019 Leadership Class did a 5K run that got postponed and redone Saturday called Hit the Bricks. Wanted to thank them for putting that on, bringing people to town. I want to thank the Shawnee street staff for helping with that, providing the route for that to happen. Vita sponsored it, or helped sponsor. They raised $7,000, went to Legacy Parenting, and raised awareness for other nonprofits and other amazing things we have going on downtown. It went right down Main Street, and it was a wonderful event, and they did a great job.
I was gonna welcome the fire chief, but I guess he's our champ. But I know y'all looked hard, and I think we got a real winner with that. Rodeo's coming up here pretty quick, so we're gonna be busy with that. Spectra, I presume, will be on board.
One August.
Okay. So, looks like it's gonna be some exciting times over the next year or two, anyway.
Meany?
I concur with all of the construction. Just come out to Ward 6 and look at all of the things that are going on in Ward 6. All zoning tonight is basically Ward 6. And I would encourage all of the organizations that's got grant writers, please start writing your grants to pay for the safe routes to school.
Thank you, Ben. Shawnee Forward will be hosting a reception for the new fire chief Tuesday, the 11th, at 3:30 at the Shawnee Forward office. That's 231 North Bell. Y'all come. We were ranked 29th among the best small cities to start a business by wallethub.com. Got a letter from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, so yay for Shawnee. We had—a lot of discussion. Had a lot of discussion about the Senior Center. I've been at nearly every meeting, including the budget, the Contract Committee Review meeting this year, as well as last year. And to my knowledge, this is not now, nor has it ever been, about their budget. This is not now, nor has it ever been, about their program. And I would submit that anybody that thinks it is has not been paying attention to the words that have been said. It's about governance and accountability, and after our meeting a year ago, I personally went to their board meeting and laid out some criteria we expected them to meet. That criteria was not met. So, it should not come as—have come as a surprise to anyone that the Contract Committee —Review Committee voted to hold their feet to the fire. So, to the extent you think it's about Kate, or programming, or budget, you are sadly mistaken. So, y'all listen when we say things, and I understand that it's hard to sort through the rhetoric and the self-serving statements that are being made. But pay attention, and we'll get you to the bottom line. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority. Would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt, seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries six-zero. Consider a resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and authorizing the sale of said items at auction or disposal at the Shawnee Regional Airport's discretion with all funds collected to be allocated to the Shawnee Regional Airport. Bonnie?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners? So, we—you may recall that we had a pretty nice program where we were able to lease out one of our old, very, very large hangars to one of our commercial tenants in exchange for some major renovations of that facility. Well, a little bit more than spring cleaning. As the renovation began, we came across some things. Two compressors, one with an air cooling unit attached to it, and some old light lenses that understandably, the compressors were likely installed some years ago, maybe by a tenant who was a paint shop, but cannot be identified. They are fixed in the building and apparently have not been run for about 20 years. And we also found some boxes of runway and taxiway light lenses, which were from the original lighting project at the airport, which has been superseded by the LED project. So, we found that these were sort of tucked into a corner, as things may be, out of the way in the back of the hangar, and we'd like permission to declare them surplus and to offer them sale on the UNet auction site that we've been using so far. If that's what—
Any questions of Bonnie? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there a second? By Commissioner Sehorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city of Shawnee, Shawnee Regional Airport purposes, describing said items and authorizing the sale of said items by auction in the event items do not sell at auction disposal at the city of Shawnee, Shawnee Regional Airport discretion. Funds from said auction or other disposal remedies will be allocated to the Shawnee Regional Airport.
Thank you. Call a question. Motion carries six-I. They put that in all cases, so I'll seek to have you read it. Item three, consider be it's lease of Shawnee Airport Authority property located at Johnco Road, one-half mile west of Highway 18, Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purpose—to purpose of harvesting heck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, we published a bid and had six members of the community request the bid documents, and several of them actually requested an opportunity for alternative bids, which is why we did not present a recommendation at the last meeting. We presumed that we may have had something that we had to juggle. Turned out, in fact, we only received one bid, but it's a good bid. The bid amount of $2,577 per year was above the minimum bid reserve of $2,500 a year. All of the required documentation was properly executed and submitted, and staff is recommending award of the bid to lease the property for two calendar years with the option to renew for three additional years.
Is there a motion to approve the award of the bid?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries six-I. Is there any new business?
No, sir, any new business?
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone. I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Gillum. Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Item two, consideration of a contract with Hayes and Russell Consultants for project management services relating to the advanced metering infrastructure AMI project.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, one of those strong elements of the article progress that you mentioned earlier is captured in our automatic meter infrastructure that we're going to install shortly, the contract that you approved at the last council meeting. Over 10 years ago, when I was involved with this project, I thought we were prepared, and I thought we knew what we were doing when we installed it, found out subsequently that we had to do a lot of post-contract and infrastructure execution to resolve the issues that we didn't foresee. In those 10 years, this technology has morphed in a manner that I couldn't even have described 10 years ago, and I submit that we still don't know what we don't know. Now, we're submitting a tremendous amount of money towards introduction of this capability for its first evolution in Shawnee. Much like some of the other contracts that we have executed, when we try to do these things ourselves, we tend to find, we come up short when it comes with the intellectual property that's resident in those contracts. So I sought, an expert in the field, I canvassed a number of companies, none of whom had submitted a proposal to be our contract of installation for the system. But tonight I have Russ Smith with us here of Hayes and Russell, and I seek your endorsement to, for him to serve as our program manager as we install this $4.2 million chance?
Three, or 5.38 million.
5.38, and we're asking for $100,000. That's a full percentage point below the normal market rate. I seek your indulgence and approval.
Any questions of Eric? Is there a motion to approve?
Someone.
Moved by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any further discussion? Call a question. Motion carries six zero. Item three, consideration of agreement between Shawnee Municipal Authority, SMA, Potawatomi County Development Authority, PCDA, and Tecumseh Utility Authority, TUA, regarding the North Deer Creek Reservoir watershed, West Watkins Reservoir operation and maintenance agreement.
Mayor, commissioners, as you know, one of our essential requirements for any community is the delivery of safe and plentiful drinking water. There has been a migration of this particular agreement over the years to, due to a number of factors. Mr. Mayor, you have personally been involved in the development of this agreement, but it seems to reach and touch on all the positive elements. I defer to you for any other insight.
Thank you. Marty Lewis and I have worked very hard going through this agreement, and this is a result, if y'all have questions, Marty is here, and Dr. Joe Tarran, who is a longtime chairman of PCDA, who's principally responsible for that thing being out there. What we sought to do in this agreement is to set forth our responsibilities as to Shawnee and Tecumseh who own the thing, and PCDA, who is responsible for its operation, at least for now. And these responsibilities, my principal point of confusion as we went through this, was it seemed as though we at times wanted to assign these responsibilities to a third party. We've had, McLeod has been operating the recreational facilities for some time, and the agreement, as I read through it personally, seemed to, in my mind, lull us to sleep into thinking that certain things that went on out there were McLeod's responsibility. They are not, they are our responsibility between us and the water resources people, and we cannot assign or abrogate those responsibilities in any way. So this agreement is an attempt for us to set forth, not while those of us who know how this went on are still here, but when we're long gone, is something that, when you read it, will be crystal clear as to what our responsibilities are. We fully intend to come back with a separate agreement for McLeod to operate the recreational, I assume that we will stay with McLeod to operate the recreational facilities, but likely we'll contract that with a third party, most likely McLeod, to continue much of the present operations. The city manager doesn't feel like our staff can adequately oversee it, given the geographical distance between us and them. So, that's the purpose of this agreement, and I know Marty or Dr. Joe would be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Is this just an extension of service, let's say inspection, et cetera, that we...
It's a combination of two old agreements, which, when you read through them...
I'm familiar with the recreational already.
Were a little bit confusing, and then we had a separate contract with McLeod. And as we worked through this agreement, we started out with a three-way agreement, and I objected to that because it, again, it made me feel like we were lulling this body to sleep, and that they could look to McLeod to, as responsible to perform these, and they may well do the physical act of the performance of them pursuant to contract. I just wanted this body to understand that the fact that those things have to be done to protect the watershed is our responsibility, it will always be our responsibility, and we can't contract it to any third party. Was that fair?
Yeah, I don't know that I'm the appropriate person. I'm Marty Lewis, for those who don't know me, I think the mayor hit the nail on the head, and assistant manager also, or the city manager, excuse me, mentioned it as well. Water is the most important thing that is going to justify the existence of this place, and so the protection of Shawnee Twin Lakes and the West Watkins Reservoir for the foreseeable future is critical, and so you can't give that responsibility to somebody else. There are subplots, if you were, to that responsibility, such as the recreation area, that because of convenience and otherwise, you're going to give to somebody else. But you can't give up the ultimate responsibility, any more than PCDA can. PCDA is the first entity that has an agreement with the federal government who provide the funding, and so we can't give that up to anybody else. This agreement kind of puts some things in place, eliminates some agreements that weren't very clear, and cleans some things up so that, and Richard and I have had this conversation, as well as Dr. Joe, 20 years from now, it shouldn't change things. We should still be able to operate very, very well, there'll still be some hiccups here and there, but we want to make sure we protect that watershed for hundreds of years. I think this agreement is at least a really good next step, because the agreements we've had to this particular point have been, at best, vague, and at sometimes conflicted. I'll just simply say that, I see the attorney over here nodding in agreement, I'll just leave it like that.
So we're just shedding more light on the picture from multiple sides.
I think so, that's probably a fair analogy right there, Mr. Gillum. I, you know, it's an eight-page document, I don't know that it sheds a tremendous amount of light, but I think it's much better than what we've had at this particular point, and allows us to move forward when the commission changes here, when the commission changes Tecumseh, when the PCDA changes, when McLeod changes.
We sometimes take water for granted, we no longer can afford to do that.
Water's the new gold, right? Heard that a lot.
It's been an experience for me going through this, because you get into the watershed and...
I agree.
And the upstream fecal matter, which may come from cows grazing or whatnot, there's a jillion different things to think about, and these things are really important when you're dealing with people's water supply, plus our responsibilities to the federal government. If we don't do it right, we will lose it.
So we're going to come back to the agreement, is that what's going to happen? You're going to come back to us with an agreement?
There is an agreement attached, that needs one modification. If you go to paragraph 7C, we need to strike and/or MPWA, and that's just an oversight on our part that references the old agreement with McLeod. And with that, with that phrase being stricken, the chair would move, we approve the contract.
I'll second.
Is there any further question? Thanks, Marty.
I'm still looking for 7C. I'm paid seven. Reinvestment. I just happen to know that, I'm sorry.
He's got a committed memory.
Let's take him out, and/or MPW.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on, we can contract third party to do parts of it, or we cannot contract?
We can contract the performance of it, we can't contract the responsibility.
Right, we maintain the...
We will, in all likelihood, we'll end up with McLeod operating, just like they've been doing it, I wouldn't anticipate any...
Regardless of who's doing it, we're responsible.
There's an oversight committee within this agreement, made up of a representative from Shawnee, from Tecumseh, from PCDA, that will have some responsibilities behind the scenes as well, but I don't know if this is the correct term, we can't give up, the three parties cannot give up ultimate responsibility of the protection of that particular asset. It's pretty clear in this document. Can you have other people carry out actions to meet those obligations? Yes, you can, but you can't then transfer responsibility to that third party, does that make sense?
Right. You can have them do it, but it's still your fault.
That's right.
You're still liable.
Yes.
Okay, do we still have a contract in place for the recreation facility at this point?
We have an existing contract, that contract will now be examined and most likely reviewed and extended.
So it's not going to be nullified right this minute, when we adopt this?
I think by its terms, and Buck, you probably know better than anyone, I think by its terms, it has expired, and we continue to operate under that same agreement.
As of yesterday, it carried over, it's up yesterday.
Okay.
It gave me new automatic, it's up yesterday.
So we will have that still in place until it comes back to us again.
Right.
Busy time of year for that, it's just, I know we're looking at... We had hoped to get this done a long time ago, this is about an eight, about as long as you were dealing with some other things, we've been dealing with this. This is about draft version 43.
This particular contract, in fact, is much more pressing from a term standpoint than the contract with McLeod.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Agree. Dr. Joe, would you like to speak? This is Papa Smurf, for those of you who don't know him.
I speak on behalf of me, not PCDA. This is just my opinion. First of all, I want to thank Richard and Marty for working this out, it's something that really needed to be done. I thank Mickey, and I've been visiting with each one of you, and each one of you has been patient with me, and I thank you for that. There's a couple things that, I just saw this today, this afternoon, there's a couple things that come to my mind that bother me, and one, we do not address the reason that lake is there, and if you will allow me a few minutes, I'll explain. 1974, we signed an agreement with Shawnee to provide water for the Pot County Development Authority Rural Water District. 1982, Shawnee had a drought, and they notified us they were going to have to cut us off. I've got 555 customers that are going to be cut off. That's when I started working on getting an alternate supply of water. West Watkins is a result of that effort, and this does not guarantee me any water. In the original agreement with the securities agreement with the bond indenture, it gives us PCDA 100,000 gallons guaranteed treatment water a day. Up to that point, we had no guarantee, we had a rural water district with not a supply of water. So that's the reason I wanted to address this issue, because at some point in this agreement, I would, we've got to have included in that a source of supply to the rural water district that Shawnee. I think statutorily, once you accept me as a customer and I pay my bills, you can't cut me off, but that requires litigation, so if you would just include it in that, that we will receive 100,000 gallons of water a day, up to $100,000 treated water. And Richard, thank you, and Marty, and all of you guys for being patient with me. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there...
Is it, no. Marty, is it?
Marty, where is it?
Marty, is that includeable without objection?
At this point, I'm agreeable to almost anything there. The attorney can write it, I can agree to it.
That makes the second change to this agreement, are there any?
I apologize for that.
Me too.
Draft 44.
Me too.
One more thing, if you allow me, once this is approved, it still has, according to our agreement with the National Resource Conservation Service, we've got to send this agreement to them, and they've got to approve it.
Yeah, part of what precipitated this is a review by them of some things, some conduct and some physical things that occurred and whatnot, so there's some steps beyond this. Is there a motion to approve, or the chair made, the chair moved, was there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sehorn.
We're going to have a modification of that.
Yeah, just to clarify the motion, that's a motion to approve the agreement that was submitted with two changes, the first being the modification to paragraph 7C, striking the language and/or MPWA, and the second change, not being specifically annotated, but for there to be a provision added to the agreement that guarantees the PCDA 100,000 gallons of treated water per day.
Up to, right?
Up to, thank you. Is that correct, Mayor?
That's correct. Call a question. Motion carries six, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We are adjourned, and I thank you for your indulgence.